I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Noblesville County Council for Tuesday, November 18th. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Stackelback, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyce. Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our November 4th, 2025 meeting.
So.
Approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 4th, 2025. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the agenda.
Moved approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any comment cards, but if any of you would like to fill one out and bring it to the clerk's table, we'd love to hear your comments. Now it's up for the mayor. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. Members of the council, great to be with you yet again today. Just briefly, I just want to thank you all, for many of you that attended yesterday's grand opening of Phase Three of Pleasant Street. It's a big deal for our community. I drove it multiple times today. Hopefully you've had a chance to do it as well. Just a quick reminder, obviously this is a project that's 44 years in the making, and we're really proud of it, and I think can transform our community. So thank you for your willingness to be bold and lean in on what was not an easy project to do, but anything worth doing oftentimes isn't easy. So we're going to continue to do those projects going forward, to move our city forward. Just a quick update for anyone watching online or for you all, the Midland Trace Trail in that section still is not open. I know I had a lot of folks that said it looks like it should be, and I said, my license says I weigh 220, and so, you know, it's just not true. So we're going to trust the engineers here. There is some guardrails, I believe, that need to still go in, so we're going to just take deep breath and let experts get that all done, and we'll get that open here in the coming weeks. Just trying to pull a parallel for you. And so that is currently still closed, and then Phase Two, which is the area by the post office, I know those sequentially are a little bit odd, but Phase Two over by the post office, still under construction, that area working through some soil issues. We knew we'd have it, that would be probably one of our most challenging areas. But the goal is still to have that open by the end of 2025.
In some manner.
In some manner. That's what, between legalese and engineers, that's usually how I couch that. But in some manner, we'll have that open by the end of this year. And just for full record, you know, our project schedule was to have all this done by the end of the year, so even Phase Three is about, you know, six or seven weeks ahead of schedule. So on time, under budget, I think that's really, really important. And again, what's a few weeks amongst 44 years? You know, we're going to get there, and it's great, and it's beautiful, and it's going to be done right. So again, just want to thank you. We had the Commissioner of the State Department of Transportation, which is a big deal to have a state leader join us for that on Monday, so just kudos to everybody. Thanks to the community for the patience and grace along the way. I know there's always challenge when you build a new road like that, so I wish I could say it's probably the last time we'll close a road, but it probably won't be. But that road will help greatly reduce our downtown traffic and make east-west mobility in our community a lot better going forward. So kudos to you and to the community for continuing to lean in on great conversations around this, so.
I'm going to say kudos to you for your leadership on this, because as you said yesterday, you ran when you were running for mayor.
Yep.
We were going to build this road.
Yeah.
So we have built this road.
We did. And again, I know why my predecessors didn't do it. You know, it was complicated, but I appreciate the many people who stood beside me in that, and Ali Kropsky, her team, Matt Light, John Hughes, all of them who continued to move forward with the right project and to do the right thing for the right reasons. So we'll continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of the mayor?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. We will move on to council committee reports and the Public Safety Committee, and Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee met on November 12th at the Police Department. We had a brief tour of the courts. The Fire Department gave an update on the breathing apparatus that have been ordered and are on track. Court update, nothing new. We talked a little bit about interpreters and how those are assigned. Police Department update, we welcomed Chief Arnold for the first, his first meeting of Public Safety Committee as chief, and talked a little bit about his vision and some things he wants to do, including technology, his investment in technology, and we got to see, spent most of our meeting with a drone. We actually launched the drone, and it was really fascinating what that can do. It was amazing. We got to see Mr. LA leave the meeting early, so that was good to see. Drone. Other business, we talked about the two capital improvement projects, and the police station and the fire station, they're right on track with what we've been saying they will, when they'll come to life. And that was just kind of a short meeting. Spent a lot of time on the drone, so. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Peterson?
No, I just added another additional comment to that. I went through the Citizens Police Academy, got a chance to see the drone, how they're used, and amazed me the technology that we have, and using that technology for the safety of our officers and both the public was very important. I'm glad to see that continue to move forward, so.
The drone was parked above the Judicial Center, and we could read the reader board at BICA. Read the menu, so. It was amazing.
Really cool. And Mr. Elliott's license plate.
Yeah. We can see what he was reading in the car, so.
TMI.
Right.
Anything else? Moving on.
I'm done.
Mr. Davis and the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Madam President. We met November 13th, Pete Schwartz, Aaron Smith, Tom Thurston, and myself. We have gone authorization for the Embrace Downtown project discussed with Matt Light. We talked about a additional appropriation fiscal action with Tom McDonald for the Best Investment Program, and a semi-annual debt summary report. Caitlin Kesner did that with Jess Spalding. And quarterly financial reports, 2025 Quarter Three, was presented by Caitlin Kesner also. That and the claims come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions of Mr. Davis, Finance Committee?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Make a motion to approve the claims as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as submitted. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 41-11-25, and ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 05-02-25, authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds for 2025 for the Link at Hyde Park Edward Rose Projects. Amy Smith.
Good evening. There have been no changes to this bond ordinance since it was presented at your last meeting. However, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or provide details if you are not remembering them, but I do ask for your approval. It has been presented at Finance Committee, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mrs. Smith on this?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve ordinance number 41-11-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 41-11-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Stackelback.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Eight zero, the ordinance is approved.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Council to Consider Ordinance Number 42-11-25, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a taxable economic development revenue bond for Avanza at Hyde Park, the Trinitas Project. Mrs. Smith?
This also has no changes since it was presented to you, but again, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but would ask for your approval.
Any questions of Mrs. Smith?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve ordinance number 42-11-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 42-11-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Stackelback.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Eight zero, ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 43-11-25, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a taxable economic development bond for the Village at Hyde Park Empire Project. Mrs. Smith?
Once again, this has no changes since it was introduced, but again, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve ordinance number 43-11-25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 43-11-25. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Eight zero, and the ordinance has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
New ordinances for discussion. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 44-11-25, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation to use the receipt of Hamilton County tourism funding to pay a portion of the bond repayment for the arena at Innovation Mile and establishing a public hearing.
Moved and introduced.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Madam President, members of the council, I'm Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. So the purpose of this ordinance is to appropriate revenue that the city has received from the county innkeeper's tax, which is a new source of funding for the city's budget, and this came about from a change in state law a couple of years ago that authorized the county to increase this tax from 5% to 8%. The county is required in the state law to use this additional 3% for tourism capital improvement projects, and so with that, the county has created what they're calling the Best Investment Program. BEST stands for Business of Entertainment, Sport, and Tourism. So with that funding for this program, they're dedicating two-thirds of that funding to distribute an equal shares to each of the four cities in the county. The remaining third is for competitive grant applications projects, but what we're talking about here tonight is just the dedicated share that the city is receiving, and for 2025, that amounts to a little less than $670,000. So that's the appropriation that's included in the ordinance, and the city, with the agreement with the county, has dedicated to use this for bond repayment obligations for the arena at Innovation Mile. One of the benefits of doing that is it means that there's more unrestricted TIF revenue that the city can use to reinvest in that area. And, you know, this is just a 2025 appropriation adjustment. It is not built into the 2026 budget that you adopted last month, so we will be coming back to you in 2026 for similar reasons. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McDonald?
Madam President, I just will add that we did discuss this in great detail, Finance Committee, so everything kind of made sense there too as well, so good source in my opinion.
To add on Mr. Peterson's point, I think it's a great way when the State House is asking us to look at ways that we can find different sources of revenue, I think this is a great way to be able to add infrastructure into our community with dollars that are flowing into our community because of investment. So I think it's a great.
Cool. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 44-11-25 at our next regular meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 44-11-25 at our next regular meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 45-11-25, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds for financing construction of Phase One of the Embrace Downtown Project.
Moved and introduced.
Second.
Mr. Kropsky.
Good afternoon. I am so glad to be here. No, actually, I've not been in front of you guys in a while, and I think it's pretty exciting because Mayor Jensen was just talking about wrapping up a major transformative project in our city, and today we get to talk about starting a new project that will be very transformative to our downtown, honoring it, preserving it, and it's exciting to be introducing the bond ordinance for that tonight. Just a little background on this project, the history, there was a streetscape done a while ago before Mayor Jensen became mayor, and in 2020, we decided to pick that back up and re-initiate it shortly after that. We decided to put that on halt, and then we re-initiated it again in 2024. With that, we've had a lot of stakeholder conversations, a lot of public conversations, a lot of feedback, listened to all of the information that business owners had given us, and I really, really feel like we have developed a very good plan for our Embrace Downtown project. This does not only include aesthetic upgrades, it also is really improving our and replacing some of our much-needed underground infrastructure that will just help keep our streets safe and keep our infrastructure flowing. With this, we have been planning for the financing for a long time for this. A food and beverage tax was initiated. We've been storing up the revenues for that into a downtown development fund. With that, we plan to use this food and beverage tax, this downtown development fund, to pay for the construction of this project. So this bond authorization is for an amount up to $6.5 million. We do feel like this amount can support, or the food and beverage tax can, the revenues from this can support this bond amount. That is, that was a big part of how we sized our project. Phase One is Logan Street between 8th Street and 9th Street, and so this part, that is what we are authorizing for tonight. Phase One, Logan Street, 8th Street, and 9th Street. An economic impact analysis was completed on this project. There are great results in this economic impact analysis. I'm not going to spoil it all for you now, but it will be presented to you guys fully at one of your December meetings. With that, though, it is showing a count of over 400,000 new visitors in the next five years, and over 5 million new visitors in the next 25 years. I think that is a great, great thing for our city. Also, it shows over $25 in economic, local economic impact for every $1 spent. Again, great numbers that we're seeing there, and this will be presented at a December meeting coming up here shortly. Upcoming, so the Board of Works has approved permission, given us permission to advertise this project, so that wasn't to the newspapers actually today. These plans will be on the street here next week, and bids will be accepted on December 16th, so this is coming really fast. We will award it at the first Board of Works meeting in January, and then at that meeting, I think it is your second council meeting, it's one of your January council meetings, you will be listening to the actual appropriation, you will be receiving the actual appropriation ordinance at that time, and then the bond closing will soon follow at the end of January, early February. This project will be completed by holiday shopping season next year. That is a commitment that we have made to business owners, that we have made to the public, so come hell or high water, this will happen. And so again, this bond appropriation, this bond ordinance will allow us to get this project started as soon as possible.
Great. Any questions?
We also have bond council here. We also have bond council here, if you have any questions for them.
Just one thing to note that came up, Finance, I think it was a good question when we were talking about funding from food and beverage tax. That's citywide. So if somebody is going to a restaurant in Hamilton Town Center, that's still helping to build this project. So it's not just those dollars coming from downtown. It's community-wide, and I think I shared this last meeting, but whenever somebody comes for like a painting festival, they are helping to build this project. So I think it's a great source of revenue to support investment in downtown. And I know that we started this a long time ago, and it's finally coming to fruition.
Very exciting.
Yep.
If not, we will see you in two weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ellen.
That brings us to the end of our agenda, and for council comments. Seeing none, we are adjourned.